Okay, our call is to order the regular scheduled board supervisor meeting Tuesday, January 19th, 2016. If the audience would join the board of police agents. I'd like to leave this to the flag of the United States of America, two thirty republic, for which it stands, on any issue under God, in the fiscal, and with a reason, justice for all. Good morning. Public comment number one, this comment period is for the public to address the topics from today's agenda. Seeing the amount of movement towards the microphone, we'll go to consideration events from January 12th. Move approval?
Second.
Our motion is second, any additions or corrections? Sanders.
Aye.
Clinton.
Aye.
Two aye. Those have been approved. No personnel actions? Consider agenda, we need to add utility permit sixteen forty-seven. And that's it.
Okay, move approval or no to change?
Second. Our motion is a second, anything further? Clinton?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Two aye. Those have been approved. That takes us down to public hearing items. Discussion and consideration of lease agreement between Lease Corporation of America and Story County for the purchase of twenty-six body and in-car cameras at two hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and five cents over a five-year period. Nick Lenny from the sheriff's office.
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Thank you for hearing this today. We have brought a proposal to board for purchasing and replacement of our in-car cameras and of our body cameras. We began with an in-car camera process in nineteen ninety-seven, and then we evolved and included the body cameras, which we began actually two years before the Ferguson incident. And as the equipment matures and continues to improve, we had tried to keep up with that as best we could. We started out with one brand, we migrated to another, and then through upgrades, we experienced some great difficulties, to the point where one malfunction so bad, almost burning an officer, we pulled those cameras off. So right now, our officers do not have body cameras that they're currently wearing. So we're anxious to move forward with the process for the new cameras that we have. We are recommending the Panasonic camera, that will be an in-car camera, which will also link with the body cameras. So we will have that connectivity, which is the next step in progress in the technology that will come. So with that, I will turn over any questions for Nick, who's done the research on this program for us, and he's done an outstanding job. I also want to thank the county attorney's office. Ethan and Jessica have helped us tremendously in working with this, as well as thanks to the board for their involvement, helping us walk through this.
Paul, could you take a moment to just talk a little bit about what it takes, what should we normally expect? If you have these, you've got the body camera, you've got the car camera, they still have to be activated at some point. What is the protocol, basically, that the citizens should normally expect?
Well, that is in and of itself a huge debate going on all across America right now. There's civil liberties and civil rights issues that are being discussed. You know, as an example, an officer goes into a home on a domestic violence issue, and here's a body camera inside someone's home, their privacy, and here again, that information that we have on record is public record. So that's one of the things that we were trying to work through. The cameras that we're getting here are the kind that will be synced with the in-car cameras, so there will be certain times we activate the lights, we activate certain things in the squad car, both will start recording right away. The officer will still have the same opportunity to manually turn on and off the camera until other issues are resolved and a policy can be tightened down, much more likely.
My follow-up question is that, is normally speaking, you use domestic violence as an example, that is predicated normally by a call from someone, that there is probable cause for the law enforcement to come to that residence? And under normal circumstances, with all the things that is going around the country in terms of the police being accused of maybe excessive force and so forth, why would not something like that be utilized as another example of why you would want to have it activated? So that if there was ever any dispute between the exchange of action between individuals in the home and the officer, that would stand as an example that the officers did use proper judgment and exercising his responsibility? I just threw that out. I mean, you're gonna always have the challenges, don't get me wrong.
As the domestic violence issue, I gave just one quick example off the top of my head. There are many things to look at. As my officers go in now, on the scene, they have their body cameras activated, and they record that. And there's policies we're looking at, they're even considering every time an officer makes a stop, he's gotta tell the person that they're on camera. Well, in many instances, that would be very impractical. So it's just, there's a lot you need to work through. When we have our body cameras, and they're working, they're off.
What you just spoke to is really a great asset to the body cameras, that is how we utilize them, and it really has benefited the use of those and just being able to, you know, to show the facts and show what the scene looks like, and it's a great asset.
Great, you have questions? I'm ready to hear the presentation.
Okay. Thank you. Well, as Sheriff alluded to, we are recommending the Panasonic system. We started this research, I would say probably about eight months ago, the initial research on it. We are experiencing major problems with our current system that we have now. After a lot of research and networking with other folks that have the same type of system, they experience the same problems. We tried over the next several months to come to some resolutions and get things fixed with the company, and it just, it just was not working out for us. We cannot, we couldn't get satisfactory service from customer service and so on. So we started looking at a new system. We whittled it down to the Panasonic system. My research on the system included bringing the vendor up, actually showing the product to us, they had it installed in a car, showing the product, kinda giving us a presentation on what it would do. We then reached out to contacts that we had. I reached out to four or five different police agencies throughout Iowa, went down the St. Louis Metropolitan Police Department, and combined between all those police departments, they had five hundred and fifty cars outfitted with this Panasonic system, the arbitrator system. And the negative comments that I received on it were very, very minimal. I'm talking under five instances, and they attributed those problems with that system to user error and the installer improperly installing the equipment. And once they got those two issues worked out, they worked good. The Panasonic system has a very low failure rate, it has a point zero one percent failure rate over a ten-year period. It's a very reliable equipment, the hardware is very reliable. Panasonic's a reputable company as well, as we know, they've made several products and completed computers. And so one big selling point with them is they're not always the first company to the game, but when they do bring their products out, they're very solid, they work well, they integrate well with the purpose they're designed for. So we looked at our, we have a total of twenty-six units that we would need to outfit with a camera system. These twenty-six units would include the jail transport vehicles, including the van, two civil cars, which are sworn positions, civil deputies, along with our two reserve cars, and then our patrol units. That would outfit all three units with the system. The videos would be uploaded wirelessly as you pull into the office, everything's done wirelessly, it's saving the officer time, saving everybody time, gives the officer more time to be out on the street or in the towns patrolling and doing those sorts of duties, as opposed to manually having to pull a card out, take it in, and spend that half hour to an hour trying to get all the videos uploaded and into the correct place. As with any technology, this is a big step up from what we have, and it just keeps moving faster and faster, but it's great technology, it's very popular technology. Just a few agencies in our area that are considering this and or have this are bigger agencies such as C.R.A., P.D., Des Moines PD's bidding body cameras right now, I think they're yet to decide, but there's some bigger agencies also using the same system with great results. So after doing all that research and looking at the equipment, we really thought this was gonna be the best system to fit our needs.
Okay. Any questions? Yeah, multiple, we wanted, I think we should talk about a few questions before we have the public hearing, if anybody wants to weigh in. So couple questions, Nick, I'm so appreciative of the research you've done. I'm one of those that I happen to agree completely that for an agency the size of the sheriff's office, body cameras and in-car cameras are the right thing for us to do. And if we're gonna do it, we better have a system that really, really operates well. Because the worst thing that can happen to us is us have the system, something happened, and then us not be able to produce what we need to produce from the videos, or lack thereof. My questions are, love that you've done the homework, love that there's minimal complaints, but do we get an opportunity to try these things out? I know we've had it in one vehicle, talk to me about that.
Thanks for bringing that up, I failed to mention that. We have a demo scheduled to start on February fourth. We originally had it scheduled to start at the beginning of this month with the vendor, that demo unit was already out, and we had some problems getting it in. But February fourth, we will be demoing the unit, we'll get it throughout the remainder of February. So we're looking to demo that equipment, and assuming the purchase gets approved today, the agreement and all the details will be signed after that demo. So we would be asking not to commit to the agreement on today's date, but allow us to do the demo, and then that agreement would be prepared with the same terms as it has today, and that would be signed in February, either during that demo period or at the conclusion of it.
Tell me how the demo will work, it'll be in one vehicle or?
Yeah, so it'll be one vehicle, and they'll bring up all the demo equipment, which would consist of like a wireless access point, which gives you the ability to wirelessly upload your videos onto the server. Their demo unit also includes the server, which is gonna hold all those videos. So it's just kind of a, it's a all-in-one mock system, they'll completely install it into the car, and then what needs to be set up for infrastructure in the office, they have a mobile demo unit that'll be installed there for that period, and so we'll get to try it out fully in one car with all the capabilities.
Okay. And if, so we've done the research, we think this is a system we're like, clearly Panasonic is a very reputable brand, but let's say we tried it out on February fourth, we get to March first, and you guys take a look at it, and you say, okay, we thought it was gonna work for us, but it's really not gonna work for us, what happens then?
Working with Jessica and the county attorney's office, I'll let her explain in more detail, but essentially there would be no penalties for backing out if you haven't made any commitments with the agreement. We haven't ordered anything through the vendor, so there's no commitment on our part until and if we sign that agreement in February, but if you might add something to that.
Yes, thank you Supervisor Sanders, that's a really good question, and I think you pinpoint a really important issue, which is there are a couple things pending that the county attorney's office would ask. Should you decide to approve this agreement, we'd ask that you approve it subject to, one, a successful test period of the product in February 2016. We also have, we're in negotiations regarding the interest rate that expires at the end of this month, that we've asked to be continued out past a successful test period, so we'd ask that any approval of the agreement is subject to an extension of that interest rate. And then there's also what's called an unfunded transaction fee that we're in negotiations with, we're in agreement with that. What that is, is if we decide not to buy it, there's an un-satisfied transaction fee that they're claiming, and we've told them we're not in agreement with that, so we also ask that any approval of the contract is subject to a waiver of the unfunded transaction fee. If we approve subject to these items, then the situation which Supervisor Sanders mentioned would mean that we can just return the items. It's our advice that we not sign any contract agreements until after the February test period.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah. It helps, absolutely. What is the interest rate that we would, that at this point we're being quoted, that at this point doesn't last until March first?
What's the question?
Four point five four percent.
Per each, that's just for the total amount, interest rate on per person, per instance?
Correct.
And I don't know if it's appropriate, Mr. Chair, at this point to comment, but it seems like as part of the diligence and things that you've done in doing the research, that it's in our best interest to go down this path of actually bringing it onsite, having that demo in more timely manner, and then trying to determine if that is the direction that we'd want to go. And if we are successful in negotiating, and they've agreed to some of these other factors, it's in our best interest, as well as in their best interest, as you move forward. Because I think any company that is trying to cover the market, you know, want to have another success story that they can look to about their product and so forth. So I think this is a win-win, could be a win-win for both groups. It certainly would, in my opinion, be the right course for us to consider. The issue again for us, and this is where Supervisor Sanders with his numbers thought, and then working with Lisa Markley, in terms of our ability to enter into this, we've not determined exactly when and where this would all come, but does this appear to be something, if this is approved, that we would be able to move forward through this F Y? Or is this, what, I know there has been some preliminary, this has been brought to our attention in the past, but we've not had a definite decision as to how to move forward. So is that something that should be talked about prior to opening for public hearing or what?
We've had those discussions with the auditor's office, and the lease payment is included in the sheriff's budget for the upcoming fiscal year. And we would go find, further that discussion we had talked about, if we enter into this, we would go find, I think it's an extra forty-seven thousand dollars, right? It's forty-seven beyond what we're currently paying. I believe the-
Forty-seven beyond what we're currently budgeting?
But did, forty-seven new dollars, forty-seven thousand new dollars, and we talked about being able to pay that yet in this fiscal year. And then while we haven't settled on a final budget for the sheriff, in our budget conversations last week, we did in fact talk about recognizing that there would be forty-seven thousand dollars of new expenses in order to accommodate this camera system.
For total of sixty-seven thousand.
For total of sixty-seven, but twenty thousand's already in-
Exactly right.
Yep. I think it's the right thing to do. I think it's the right thing to do in a department of any size. And I can speak with a little bit of authority that a lot of times, it's a one-man show. And a body camera would take a lot of the he said, she said out of a situation that one of your deputies goes into, and he has to handle on his own, because more times than not, that's what happens. And I want to commend the sheriff and his staff, and in particular Sergeant Lenny and his hard work and diligence to come up with a product I think is gonna serve the county well. It's a lot of money, it's quarter of a million dollars, and I'm glad we had the work put in beforehand, see, just to make sure that we're getting the right product, so. Yeah, but, so I want to go further down the road of what is the true cost to the people of Story County is. Yeah, it's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it's fifty thousand dollars a year roughly in new expenses, but let's talk about that for just a minute. I'm really encouraged by something that Officer Lenny said just a minute ago, and that is, that it appears to me that we're gonna be cutting down a half hour to an hour per shift, per man, per shift, in uploading these videos. So if I understand it correctly, if we have, and I think Sheriff, help me if I'm missing this, I believe we have six officers per day that are dedicated to patrol, right? Two per shift, three shifts, six per day dedicated to patrol, is that close to the right number?
We, you know, we have, basically, the schedule we have, we have six that are on, but you know-
Sure, and then everybody picks up, sure.
We average about four per shift.
Four per shift, what we have on the schedule, and I'm just gonna do the basic math and understand that it's more than that. If we have six officers per day that are scheduled to be on patrol, and we save an hour per day per officer, that's six hours per day more patrol. You go six hours per day, and Sheriff is a hundred percent right when he says he's twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five, you multiply that out, and we are in essence getting an extra patrol position, over two thousand hours per year of more time on patrol by doing this. When you start looking at it in terms of fifty thousand dollars in order to get an extra, in essence, person on patrol per year, that's money well spent, as I see it. I mean, if we're asking these guys to take an hour of their day back in the station uploading this stuff, that's an hour per day that they're not out on the streets. And so I like looking at it from that point of view, and I appreciate it, Nick, you bringing that to our attention.
Just also again, Paul said, I think it's also a tremendous safety factor for the officer. Whether they're alone or two of them, people do act differently, you know, you know they're being recorded. And whether it's a traffic stop or on a call of some type, it's certainly nice to have that there, especially when you're alone, but it does provide a certain level of security.
Well, and we're so fortunate here in Story County that we have such great officers who, I am quite confident, behave appropriately all the time, but it works both ways too, right? The public behaves a little differently when they know they're on camera, but an officer who might, who might otherwise cross a line, if he knows that it's all being, or he or she knows that it's all being recorded, makes it a little less likely that you're gonna see that line crossed, and I think that's a benefit for everybody as well.
I have nothing else to move to.
Okay, with that, I will open the public hearing, anybody that has anything to add to the conversation, this would be the time to come forward.
It's your chance, Drew.
Seeing any movement, I will turn to the board. Yeah, so I think it's the right thing to do. I think that the sheriff's office and Nick have done a great job bringing us options. I think we settled on a few weeks ago that Panasonic, of the ones that were looked at, Panasonic was the best. I'm really happy that we get a month now to try it out before we're obligated to anything. And so for those reasons, I would move approval, but I want to make sure in this motion that we're really, really clear. I believe that the interest rate that they have quoted us to this point, it's important that they go ahead and extend that until the date that we would actually commit, which as I understand it would be on or about March first, when we complete the trial or the demo. So I want to see an extension of that current interest rate. We need to get through the demonstration. If we get into February, we find out it's not right, we need to be able to withdraw our approval. And then finally, Jess, I think you mentioned a transaction fee that's not really enumerated. I don't like things that aren't enumerated, so I'd just like that removed. So my motion is based on the interest rate as it's quoted, being solid all the way through, a successful trial for the month of February, and let's get rid of any-
Unfunded transaction fee.
Yeah, a transaction fee that doesn't have any amount to it.
Do you have a motion for rules subject to those things?
Subject to those things, I have a second motion, and you know, that sounded exactly like how I was thinking it. That's my story, and I'm sticking to it.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second. Is there anything further? Shall we need any, anything further for the motion? Sanders.
Aye.
Clinton?
Aye.
Two aye. That's been approved definitively.
Thank you.
Paul, Nick, thank you, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Under additional items, we're gonna remove the discussion and consideration of the capital assets policy for later date. That leads us to discussion and consideration of administration building front desk remodel, approximately ten thousand dollars, and I see Cal in the back. He's moving towards the mic.
That one doesn't include body cameras for Cal, right?
Yeah, yeah. Good morning, Cal Pearson, Story County Facilities Management. Been a request that came earlier this year with the reorganization of staff to spend some money on the front entrance of the administration building here, put a person down there permanently. Nothing's been done to that area since I've been here, so I'm guessing thirty-plus years it's been the way it is. So also with this remodel, we're also addressing a safety issue that was brought up earlier, a trip hazard that will be eliminated with this remodel, so it's kind of a combination of custom new desk work and taking care of safety issue. So what I have is just a proposal for a new desk, custom-built, and a new mailbox. I'm sure you're all aware of the mail system that's down there, it's just a drawer that the mail gets put in. We'll put a U.S. Postal approved mailbox up in the area. Post office will deliver, everything will be secured from now on, so each department has a key for their box, and can get their mail checked on it. The other thing that we plan to add is a drop box for Renee, for tax drop offs. So we've got several things here, and looking for work to move ahead with this.
So this will be a custom-built desk, and then it'll be, are you guys involved in the installation or the building of the desk, or is that gonna get farmed out to-
It's gonna get farmed out to Flat Top Construction, who is a former employee of facilities management, so, you know, he will do the desk, we will help with the lighting or electrical. Cableing needs to be done, make this work the way we want it to, and IT's also involved, we'll see if IT put in a team or some staff, and Cal and you're able to have everybody need to do their job.
Cal, I know this is something we've been talking about for a year, and I appreciate your work on that. I wonder if you'd spend just a minute talking about the difficulty you had in finding somebody that would actually bid on the work. I know, I know you reached out to multiple different entities trying to get somebody to bid on work, was the job just not big enough to get?
You know, I don't know, I had a bid from another contractor early, but I never, I never had any more contact after that, you know? I wanted to get moving on it, and they were considerably higher too, so I moved on to see if I could find interest. So this was the third contact I've made. Through the summer, I suppose there's a lot of busy people, but it is a small job, and it's kind of unique on, I think, there's a lot of things have to be factored into it.
Yeah, and so we keep throwing around the word custom and building something in down there, let's talk about that for just a minute. As I understand it, the marble platform that's down there creates an issue for trying to buy anything that's prefab or manufactured, and it also, that marble slab down there is what creates the tripping hazard, so we would need, if we're gonna take care of that, to have something designed that actually surrounds that whole platform.
Correct. And this is the best alternative, you know, the other option is getting an architect, involve engineer, and completely removing all of that marble that was set in there, and then you could probably come up with something that, we're talking a lot of money that I don't think we need to spend, but I think we can build this in place and cover up what's existing there and not disturb other offices as we're doing. People build it off-site, and it'll come in, and hopefully we can have it switched out quickly.
And I think you mentioned earlier, it's been 30 years, or at least 30 years, since anything's been done down there. The second thing that I would remind this board is that when we all sat down together for the first time in 2011, we really had nobody stationed there other than when mail was sorted every day. That was the only time we had anybody there, and we've made a commitment to having somebody there for much of the workday in order to make it easier on citizens who come to the building to know where they're supposed to go, in order to have an extra set of eyes on what's actually going on in our interest. I think it's the right decision, but I think in order to do that, we've got to have an adequate facility to house them down there.
I think it got overlooked when we did the remodel on this building years ago, because the attention was more directed to maybe having that staff upstairs at that time, and that's, but you know, things change, and the fact that the need was to have a body there. I think it works much better for the public coming in to help, so that somebody's there to direct them where they should go.
These are, it's an unbudgeted item, is this one that you've identified years, or is it going to require a budget amendment?
I have a line, I have 241, four things like this, but this is a little higher mouth than what I have in there. I just will have to move forward through the year and see how things look towards the end. There may be a possibility I may need to amend a little bit.
But we wouldn't need to amend any dollars, and at this point, it'd be at the end of the fiscal year, you'd figure out whether any of this would need to be amended.
Correct.
And what are you looking at for a timeframe?
Well, I think he's ready to get going on it as soon as it's approved. This is the time of year when he can work on inside-type work, so I'm hoping into February, March, somewhere in there, maybe we can have this done, you know, like the mailbox is just order that and get it set, and I think Renee's drop box, that shouldn't be too big of a deal either, get that in there as quick as possible.
So I come in the back door most of the time, but see, do we still have an orange cone down there protecting that one corner?
We've got three of them, yes.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. Okay, I move approval of up to $10,000 for the front desk remodel.
Second? We've got a motion and a second to approve the construction of a new front desk. Anything further? Clinton, no, Sanders.
Aye.
Clinton.
Aye.
To aye, that's been approved. Thanks, Cal.
Thanks, Cal.
That takes us to departmental reports. Community Services, quarter of the report, Carl.
Right.
And Eric Revers.
Carl Webb with Community Services. Going to talk with you about our report for October 30th, 2015. For general assistance, we assisted 24 single household individuals and 27 family household individuals, or household cases, for a total for the reporting period of 51. I looked back just to kind of see how we compare to last year at this time, and last year through the month of December, we had assisted 54 single individuals and 59 family households. So I think we're running pretty comparable to what we were doing last year. With denials, we had 208 this reporting period, 419 year-to-date. On that, in comparison to last December, we were at 133, so again, pretty comparable. Individuals who applied but did not return for whatever reason, we had 19 for the reporting period and 37 year-to-date. We were up more last year with that, at 53, so that first come down. For rental assistance, for the quarter, we provided $15,222.30. For utilities, we provided $1,523.89. And then for items such as transportation and burial, we provided $5,460.66. With substance abuse services, we paid on five different claims for the period, and total year-to-date, paid up 12. Any questions? I'll just go first. Moving on, with asset during the quarter, agency visits and liaison reports were completed by the volunteers, and then agencies also turned in their May year reports in December. The various vendors identified their FY '16, '17 funding allocation, and Dev assisted with providing volunteer training, budgeting, and allocation process with our regional volunteers as we planned in December. With the MHDs with the region, we completed our FY '15 annual report, and that was submitted to DHS on the 4th, December 1st. We've also continued to do just various contracts with providers in the region. Our administrative team has been evaluating the need for additional staff to complete regional functions, and I believe it was in our November meeting, a position for a program manager was presented to the governing board, and the board did approve that position. And now our task was trying to figure out the hiring process for that because it would be a regional position. And so an employee committee has been formed. There's individuals from the administrative team, as well as the governing board, participating in that, and our CEO has also reached out to an attorney who, I understand, specializes in employee practices, and a senior supervisor, and also been helping with that. And we're trying to stay informed about all the mandate changes with the management organizations and that, and I believe Aaron's going to go into a little bit more detail with some of those items in her report. We did hire for the administrative assistant to position Jennifer Burns, started out January 6th. Veterans Affairs did get relocated to our office space, they moved in on November 23rd. Administrative staff immediately started answering phones for VA. These phones being rolled out to the front office when he's not in the office. They were started by taking messages from him, giving him paper copies of that, and those procedures and that. And then now we've moved on to where they are actually scheduling appointments for him. So rather than taking a message of somebody needs an appointment, we've identified a process to get those appointments scheduled, so that he's not having to call those folks back and potentially play a phone tape and that, so I think that's helped to kind of streamline some of that.
We heard from the VA Commission and from Brett that things were going great from their perspective, they really appreciated the move in, they appreciate the support. How's it going from your perspective and your staff's perspective? Have we been able to integrate him without a lot of disruption, or how's it going?
Yeah, I think that it has gone well. I mean, there's, it was a big change, I think, for administrative staff, because they were adding some new things in that, but they've all jumped in and are doing a great job and have been very willing to offer any assistance that they can.
Thank you.
Good bet. The next things that we've kind of identified to begin working on to assist him is updating the VA database, working on grade markers, whatever is there, as well as, you know, the newsletter in the spring, so we'll be helping with that, too. We have started working on the job description for the position that will become trained as a CBSO, and providing assistance to Veterans Affairs as well as general assistants. That job description needs to be finalized yet, and once that's done, then we'll set a timer in for hiring that position. Last thing to note there is, we had a staff member that participated in this event, that wants to write city names.
Just a quick analysis of your role this year, the first time, as part of the asset process, you've been taking over the position that Derek has had, and as we've gone through and I've gone through, all of the various agencies giving the presentation and so forth, could you just comment a little bit about how you felt the process went, and your involvement? I know it's, how they added a little different thing there, but I thought, just watching that they, you, you handle it, you're also, I'm just curious if you had anything to comment at all about the asset process and your role at this point?
Sure. There, it's been a learning curve for me, certainly. My involvement has been a little bit different with asset than in prior years. Previously, primarily did the contracting, process of claims and that, so I've had some things to learn. And I think there's, we've worked on educating the other admin team members about assets and how that process works, as well as educating the other volunteers also on the region, and what our requirements are and processes that we have to follow. I think there's still some work to be done to try and make both systems work well together, so Deb and I have been having some conversations on that, and it seems to be working out.
Anything else for you?
Thank you.
Okay. I first have a number change on the top line of my report. I think I counted some people twice. So in Story County, we serve 253 individuals. So a total with Franklin and Hardin County is more around 375, okay? And we've, you know, we've had, we've helped out some of the surrounding counties, we're taking a couple of their consumers as well that live in Story County and have for a long time, but you know, most everyone surrounding us is having the same difficulties we are as far as high caseloads and not having enough people to do the work. So we tried to help where we could.
And let's talk just a second about the high caseloads.
Yes.
So as I understand it, really based on the transition that we're going through at the state level, we've got employees that are rightly trying to figure out what their future holds, and with the big-time changes that seem to be coming, it does not appear that life is going to be the same. And so we've got employees that are moving on, and we're in a position where it's very difficult to fill those positions because we don't know what the future holds. So just correct me if I'm wrong, we'll talk about that for just a minute.
Okay, so the one that we lost during this quarter was Tiffany, so then that brought us down to five case managers. So yes, at this point, the delay in the MCO transition was a bit hard for us to swallow because we were ready to go, you know, January 1st, mostly because of, you know, the added workload and that kind of thing. So now it's supposed to start March 1st. Basically, what happens if we lose any case managers after March 1st, their entire caseload will go to an MCO, and whatever MCO those consumers are assigned to. We don't have the option after that point to sustain those people.
It looks to be like we're on the borderline of not being able to sustain what we've got.
Right.
So if I recall numbers that you've given in the past, a solid caseload where our people are working full-time at the job, but they're providing great services, somewhere in the 32 to 35 range?
Yes, correct.
And we're pushing 47 right now?
Correct.
And so it looks to me like we're already pushing that top limit of really being able to provide the services that are necessary.
Right.
So to me, it's just, if the state is really going to do this, it's time for them to get going.
Right.
Otherwise, people are starting to fall through to what are going to be some very real gaps in the system.
Yes, yes, and we already, part of our transition plan that we have as Central Iowa Case Management, we've got to lay down, you know, as to how to get people transitioned as fast as we, you know, as we can, you know, to help alleviate some of that. We have really not seen any direction from any of the MCOs yet as to how that transition will go. So, you know, a comfortable place for us to be would be to already have a contact person with each MCO that would work directly with us as to how many, you know, consumers they can take at a time, and, you know, just kind of space it out that way and gradually get people moving, but we haven't received any guidance about that yet. I am attending on the 29th, they've got some more meetings and things like that that they're offering around the state, and it's focused on the long-term services and supports, so I'm hoping that we can gain, and transition is one of the bullet points underneath there, so I'm hoping that they will have some more answers for us then. But really, after they delayed it, it just kind of, the information just kind of stopped. There wasn't, there isn't a whole lot more coming out at this point, because I think it has to do, the state's pretty focused on getting ready, because they weren't ready before, so. Let's see what else. So how it's kind of worked in Franklin and Hardin County, they now each basically have one case manager per county there. Robyn, the supervisor up there, has a caseload of about 27. She's got eight of our Story County people, but then she's got the rest of that. And one of the case managers has moved into a service coordinator position in Hardin County, so she'll have that job, and Robyn then will assume the service coordination position in Franklin County. So we, you know, as a board and our Central Iowa Case Management Board decided, you know, to stay in business basically until June 30th. We, our board meets again then on the 28th of this month to firm that up as far as whether or not that will be when we will just continue providing case management services, basically. And that's in an effort to be like what you've talked about, Rick, to be, to give people enough time to find something else to do. So I will know more after that, too, about that.
Well, it's absolutely the right thing to do. I mean, we're asking so much of these case managers right now, I mean, giving them more than it's reasonable to ask in the short term, hopefully in the short term. And so it just makes sense to me that if they're making that commitment to us and to the people they serve, that we would make a date-certain commitment to them, that we're not going to just pull the rug out from under them, and they'll have time to ultimately figure out what their future holds.
Right, right, and we have been as transparent as you possibly can about all that kind of, and just talking, it's an odd environment, but I mean, that's what it's all about, is just everybody talking it out and understanding where the whole process is.
Well, I was going to talk about this when you were done, but now's the right time. I mean, the reality for the people of Story County is you guys, the two of you and your staff, are pros. I mean, you just are. It's not going as well in other places as it's going in Story County, and that is 100% because of the time, energy, and effort that you guys put in, in what is completely uncertain. I mean, it's unnecessarily uncertain, but it's completely uncertain, and to do it for the good of the people of Story County that depend on these services, I mean, you guys should all be commended, and I hope, in a small way, that's what I'm doing here. I would love it if there were better answers. I would love it if we could say there's a brighter future in case management provided by Story County, but there doesn't appear to be, and so all we can do is get from here to the end in as honorable and transparent a way as possible, and you guys have done an exceptional job in that, and we all thank you.
Thank you. The case managers that are there now are definitely loyal people and definitely have their ducks in a row as far as what they want to do for people, so it's very nice to see.
We certainly couldn't do what we're doing right now without them.
No.
Absolutely, well, and I just want to point out again, even though they're outstanding, we're to the point now where we can't continue to do more with less. I mean, we're to the point that less is going to get done, things are going to fall through the cracks, they just are, because it's not possible for a case manager to take on 50 cases and really do a great job, case by case by case. There's not enough time to get it done.
No, and it's become increasingly hard with the MCO transition because providers are not willing to take risks anymore either. They don't know what kind of reimbursement they're going to get, and so some of our tougher people that are either in the hospital or, you know, getting 30-day notices that they have to leave their current provider, you know, things like that have gotten so much harder because no one else wants to, wants to serve them either, so.
Yeah, and...
What could have been done before in a reasonable amount of time just isn't getting, it's.
Absolutely, and, and I don't intend to turn this into a, an opportunity to complain about where we are, where we're headed, because we are where we are and we're headed where we're headed, but it's just really, really frustrating me, and I've, I've expressed my frustration and how it impacts our staff who are doing a wonderful job, but even more important than our staff is the negative impact that this is having on our citizens that rely on this the most. I mean, it says a lot about our society, how we're going to care, uh, and assist those who need the assistance the most, and right now, we're in a situation where people are not going to get, um, what they need in order to, to remain, uh, a productive, vital, appreciative part of this society. It's really frustrating, we've got to move to the end as fast as possible, we've got to continue to do the best we can with what we have, uh, but we need to recognize the reality that we're not going to be able to do everything in this situation.
That's pretty much my report. There's a little bit at the end about, um, well care, not receiving, you know, they terminated their contract of well care. Um, we have been kind of sitting around waiting to see, you know, who those, um, consumers are going to get reassigned to, um, but that doesn't appear to be happening either, so it's more of a, uh, talking to families and, and guardians and things like that, and, you know, if they're in, their loved one got assigned to well care, then they probably just need to call and choose someone else at this point, because I don't think.
Have you heard anything, was well care about, about appeal?
And they're, they sued, didn't they?
Or has that already been finalized? Because there was some discussion that they were going to try to appeal the decision that led up to, you know, you know, longer.
Well, I saw that they filed suit.
Yeah, they did.
They did, yeah, and that's about as far as I know, I don't know.
So, but in the meantime, I'm conscious of that, because some have already, you know, selected them.
Right. Um, so yeah, we just continue to try to gain as much knowledge as we can and pass that along to people and, and guide them as best as we can, so.
Well, please continue to do the best we can with what we have and, and know that you, while, while, uh, it, it may not feel that way from the highest levels here locally, you guys are absolutely appreciating the value for what you're doing, and, and please pass it on to your staff as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to, uh, other reports. Update of the FY16 quarterly financial report. Lisa Markley.
I was concerned that you guys hadn't seen me in like a few days because.
I don't know how we did through it there, Markley.
Right. My budget work sessions are pretty much over, so you don't get to see my face every day. Um, you have in front of you the end of December quarterly financial report, um, I don't think there should be any big surprises in it because you just went through some, two weeks of budget work sessions in which we talked ad nauseam about fund balances and about where we're at on expenses and all that kind of stuff. Just to know, there's 12 departments that are over 50% of the year on their expenditures. Um, you know, we've talked about it numerous times, we have a budget of 94% of salaries, so, so that would make sense, there's not been a lot of turnover released?
Yeah, we should be running about 52%, I mean, so if somebody's right on target, it should be about 52% because we've got to come back and amend in, or we'll probably have to amend in salary dollars in several places.
Right, right. So overall, for the expenditures for the county, we're at 42%, um, and that's, you know, directly related to mental health, obviously, we're, we're way low on those costs right now because that regional payment comes at the very end of the year.
Right, so that's a huge check right at the end of the year.
Um, the fund balance status, um, again, 52% of your expenditures in the general fund, 55 in the supplemental, 4% in mental health, we're, we're at about 46% in the world fund, um, and about 53% in the secondary organs. Revenues, 12 of the departments again are over 50% in revenues, um, for various reasons, but overall, it's 53.2, so we're running a little head in revenues and a little behind in expenses overall.
And as we project that out, we're going to end up ahead in revenues, right?
Yeah, yeah.
We, we don't expect a shortfall in revenues, uh, I would think it's reasonable to expect that we will come in a little under 100% in expenses, even with amending in, uh, the salary, I'm just looking at where we're headed. I took, I took this as a really, really, uh, solid report for where we are at this point in this year.
I agree. So I need no action to sum the, you know, the updates.
Thank you.
Good to see you again.
See, I know, I missed you.
Public forum number two comments from the public on items not on this agenda, the board may not take any actions. The comments do the requirements they were meaning to offer, may do so in the future. Has anybody moved towards the mic for the liaison side? It's Wayne.
I pass.
Pass. Pass, also announcements, Wayne?
Uh, yes, uh, the next few days, I will be out of the office, uh, uh, tomorrow and Thursday is ISAC University, uh, as a member of the ISAC Board of Directors and one of the supervisors, we have programs in place to, uh, really help new supervisors, uh, understand, uh, some of the duties and responsibilities and some of the different, uh, things that they deal with, so I will be, uh, attending that, and then tomorrow, uh, as, while I'm there, uh, the seat committee, which is, uh, the advisory committee that I've been appointed to representing, uh, supervisors, dealing with auditor certification and training and so forth, uh, will take place, uh, about 8:30 to 10:00, uh, in the morning, and then on Friday, uh, the ISAC Board of Directors meeting, I'll be attending, and as well as, uh, the ISAC Scholarship Committee. We have 31, uh, 32, uh, applicants, uh, that we're going through right now, these are, uh, children of county employees, uh, from the 99 counties, and they're divided up amongst districts, and, uh, we evaluate them, uh, and then come up with a recommendation, and then the finalists will be brought together, uh, in February, I think it's February 4th, where we will actually sit down, uh, with the committee and have face-to-face interviews, and then, uh, point those recipients of the ISAC Scholarship Award, so, uh, a lot of outstanding, uh, employees, children that are seeking, uh, funding to go on to college, and, uh, so it's going to be, uh, a real challenge to try to pick, uh, who is the most deserving from that group, but I'm certainly, uh, enjoying, uh, that opportunity.
Well, appreciate you digging into that. Wayne, I was hoping you could, uh, spend just a minute talking a little about the, the MLK celebration and your role in that.
Uh, yes, first of all, let me just say that, uh, it, it was a, a wonderful day for, for me in a, in a lot of ways. First of all, uh, you know, I did go to Rotary yesterday, and we had a, a speaker, former, uh, county attorney, uh, that is with the Department of Justice and so forth, that spoke at Rotary, uh, dealing with, uh, trafficking of, uh, people, uh, not, uh, not only in Story County, but throughout the United States, uh, and he tied it in so eloquently with, uh, Dr. King and, and, and his message and his vision and hope for the future, and, uh, gave us a, an outstanding, um, uh, review of the challenges that, uh, we're faced with, uh, and how similar, uh, trafficking, uh, is to, uh, form of slavery that, uh, has been going on worldwide, not only, uh, in this country, but in other countries, uh, and so forth. And then, uh, later in the afternoon, uh, we had the, uh, citywide celebration, uh, which was held last night, uh, we had, uh, Associate Judge Odell McGee, uh, from, uh, Polk County, who was our keynote speaker, uh, he said that was his third or fourth, uh, speaking engagement yesterday, and yet last night was one of the most impressive ones. Our own Brew Camp, uh, uh, played a role last evening with his mentee, uh, and the fact that we had youth and young, uh, kids participating in that celebration, uh, made it even more special, uh, and each of them talked about Dr. King, his life, what it meant to them, uh, and, uh, to hear someone from, uh, another part of the state, our judge, actually talk about, uh, how well and how meaningful this celebration was because of the inclusion of so many different people was very heartening to me, and I don't want to fail to mention that on Saturday, the Ames Library, uh, hosted, uh, a forum and a session where we saw the movie Selma, uh, and had a dialogue and discussion about the impact of that and how it's relevant today, uh, and it was well-attended, uh, and, uh, so all in all, uh, it was, um, uh, just an outstanding, uh, reflection of the significance and the importance of, uh, Dr. King and his philosophy, but it also tells us, uh, why we, uh, just can't rest on the past, that we've got to continue to press forward because there are events and things that are happening today that were reminiscent of many years ago in the early 50s and 60s, and, uh, we need to, uh, continue to be vigilant, uh, in our pursuit of justice and equality for all, so, thank you for asking and.
So, well, in a lot of ways, Denver feels a lot like 1968 in a lot of ways, and, and, you know, as somebody who grew up in Birmingham, Alabama, arguably one of the, one of the centers of, uh, of the civil rights movement, um, I vacillate between being amazed and proud of how far we've come and being really, really frustrated by how far we have to go. Uh, and I just want to say to you, uh, you know, this is your last ML, uh, MLK day and week here with us on the board, I, I have been really, really appreciative of the opportunity to watch your involvement and how much it means to you, rightly so, uh, and, uh, and just thought it was appropriate for you to spend a minute talking about that, so.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'll pass, I'll announce this. So move, second. We're here.